Roll call, please.
Council Richards?
Here.
Council Gorley?
Here.
Council Trask?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Pro Tem Muller?
Here.
Council Thorsted?
Here.
And Council Sanchez.
Council Sanchez contacted me earlier today via phone to let me know that she would be unable to attend due to work. I will entertain a motion to excuse her absence.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Angie, roll call, please.
Council Thorsted?
Yes.
Council Trask?
Yes.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
Council Richards?
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes. Six eyes, no nays to excuse Council Sanchez's absence, excuse me. And we have six present and one absent. Moving on to recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Consent agenda?
Move.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. And Angie, would you please take a vote?
You're used to this somewhere. Council Thorsted?
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Council Richards?
Yep.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
Council Trask?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes. Six eyes and no nays to approve the consent agenda. Now moving on to recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Anybody want to come forward? Nope. Okay. Old business. Amararesco Audit Services Agreement. Staff report, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Last November, you approved, the council approved an agreement with Amararesco to conduct an energy savings audit of our streetlights in preparation for a project to convert all those streetlights to LED. We received the results of that audit and that, those results have been used to create a further agreement with Amararesco for the actual work to be done. We have Joe Mankiewicz from Amararesco here to present the findings and how this project would move forward. And there's more details in the packet, but after his presentation, there'll be time for any questions that you might have.
Joe, your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Joe Mankiewicz. I, my address is 16367 Southwest Cornelian Way in Beaverton. And I represent Amararesco. I've been working with City Manager Kelsey and Blair and Greg on this project since November, and I very much appreciate the time this evening. So good evening, Mayor and council members. Appreciate it. So the streetlight conversion project is a project that we do time and time again with Pacific Power customers around Oregon and around the western region. Amararesco is an energy services company, so we provide numerous energy opportunities to utilize the energy savings from a conversion project or a HVAC improvement project, whatever it is, to then use utility savings and pay for the project over time. And in this case, these streetlight conversion projects are, have extremely good payback, well within the life expectancy of the equipment installed. And so that's how we present these projects to the cities in terms of both a utility gain, a carbon reduction, a new look, so to speak, as well, and then a financial, a positive financial impact. The project itself is going to be the conversion of 881 Pacific Power owned streetlights. And that's a key to this is that Pacific Power actually owns these lights and the city pays for these lights through a service agreement. And then the conversion of these lights are typically done on a, as they go out basis. And the conversion to LED has been a, you know, obviously a big push for that, for the reduction of energy usage as well as the, there are fewer operational needs and replacement because these LEDs last longer and fail less frequently. So Pacific Power created this program, the new Schedule 51 rate, which actually incentivizes cities like yours to convert these, to spend your own dollars to convert these, even though they're owned by Pacific Power. The net benefit of the reduced rate, which is approximately a 40% discount of what you're currently paying, would then be applied and then therefore that savings, that there implies the savings over time. And if, if you were to just convert them or they allow Pacific Power to convert them, you would still be paying that higher rate, even though they would be using LEDs. So this is a great benefit. So a triple benefit for us, you guys and Pacific Power. The lights, of course, you currently use a mixer of high pressure sodium and medium pressure sodium. And, and that has approximately 60, 70% more energy usage than the LEDs that we would be installing. Now, the LEDs would also, we have done some extensive design work with teams, a lot of back and forth, the city to make sure that the coverage of the street does not change, that any improvements in certain areas would be, you know, calculated into that factor. And of course, we would be maintaining all code and safety regulations as approved, you know, as current to the, to the, what you have right now. There's also a current incredible up, a benefit of a reduced sky glow. So a lot of these projects, when we were early on, we had a lot of dark skies, community folks come forth and say, hey, wait a minute. These LEDs, they're, they're super bright. You know, you see a BMW driving at you and you're like, oh, you know, things like that, right? It's kind of almost harsh. Well, these are, these are different, obviously. And, and the LEDs themselves are directional. They have upwards of 90% less up light, what it's called. So reflective light or refractive light into the atmosphere. And, and that's just, just the basis of their design. And so we've heard, in fact, I was just in the city of Pendleton for a different project, but we had done their streetlights a few months earlier. And a couple of the council members who live up on the hill above Pendleton just were absolutely thrilled and came up to me afterwards and were like, thanks for doing those lights. They, it just, we can see the, the Big Dipper now, you know, when we go out and stuff. So it was really cool. I'll get into construction timeline, but pretty straightforward construction. I must have moved it here. There we go. Thanks. Here are a few other benefits, both financial, I call it green impact because green for dollars, but also green for the environment. The first year savings would be $40,700 approximately on your utility bills. And it's a calculated savings, again, just based on the rate adjustment for that number of lights. We do anticipate rates increasing at, we average conservatively 3% per year. And so with that cumulative savings over 20 years, and I picked 20 because it's just a nominal number. It's actually shorter than the expected life expectancy of these lights. They're upwards of 22 to 24 years. But for just a nominal 20 years, you're, you're saving $550,000. And then as far as the, the number of kilowatt hours saved, right? This is the equivalency of taking 88 gas powered vehicles off the street for a year. You know, home powering 77 fewer homes for a year, and of course, the carbon sequestration by forest growth. Really cool benefits. Is it that I'm waving it around? Probably. It's probably, it's okay. There we go. This is just an example of the upglow reduction. So the city of Medford was one of our first projects a handful of years ago. And so this is a drone, same drone, same, what do you call it? The camera aperture and lighting settings and everything like that. So the before and after clearly shows the, the reduced upglow. The change in color was a choice. So there is a slight color variation, which you will probably see something similar, but we've actually gone a little bit lower and so less, less white, a little bit closer to the yellowish orange you're seeing. So it'd be less of a drastic change. But certainly the reduction in night glow or sky glow would be reduced. Because of the unique agreement with Pacific Power and Amararesco, we are the only energy services company in the nation right now that has this unique agreement with Pacific Core to provide these, this contracting method for the city to upgrade their lights if you don't have your own upfront capital for the project. And so we create a service agreement called Energy as a Service over time, which is similar to a kind of a financial arrangement of payback of time, but because it's arranged as a service, it, it then does not follow the normal rules. So we're fronting the capital ourselves instead of going to a third party lender or a bank. And so therefore you don't have that, because the city would not be allowed to borrow money to upgrade somebody else's equipment. So we are that nice go between that can both provide the financial upfront capital as well as utilizing the art engineering and construction management services for design and implementation of the streetlight upgrades. But as far as your agreement between Pacific Power and the city, that will remain intact. And so as lights go out and things like that, you still call up PPL and they'll come out and replace the lights.
If I may, how, how long is that? Is there a warranty on that for a certain time? Is it for the 20 years?
So the warranties are standard, are standard and manufacturer warranties that come along with that. They're about 10 years, sometimes 12, depending on the type of light. These are going to be GE lights. And GE actually has a agreement directly with Pacific Power so that the warranty transfers directly to Pacific Power once that construction is complete. They could call us up, but we would just reroute them back to Pacific Power anyway. So, or GE anyway. Thank you. This is kind of our construction in time, or sorry, our, our, one throat to choke, so to speak, slide. Amararesco as an ESCO is a turnkey program, program provider from design through the financing, construction, all of the subcontractors report directly to us. And then we actually come back and help with communications and public outreach and all those things. So any, any help you need in terms of advertising or things for public outreach, we'd be more than happy to help with. And, and then we of course verify all of our work through our commissioning services. This slide basically demonstrates the, the basic finances for the first year. You see approximately 881 lights. The current, what you, annual, sorry, your current annual utility payment for these lights is $130,000. You would save $40,691 with our project. And then that net balance would then be converted into that service payment. And so we talked about an energy as a service period of 12, 12 years is about what we're, we're calculating right now. You are eligible for an Energy Trust of Oregon one-time incentive. Again, Energy Trust of Oregon is incentivizing folks for doing energy efficiency work. So there's an additional $90,000 that you would receive. That's an approximate 90,000. I think we were just going through some of the letters with ETO the other day, but the offer letters about that out, and then that would be applied to your first payment to Amararesco. The other thing about the Amararesco Service Agreement is that we only charge at the end of the first year following substantial completion of the project. So once there's a, the commercial operation date, that is when you will start officially accumulating your savings through, from Pacific Power. And, and then that would then translate into a invoiced payment at the end of that first year. That eye chart is just the pro forma to show the savings. I think if anything, I would be, is there a little laser on here? Oh, there is. It doesn't show up on the screen. All, all of that showing really is a 20-year pro forma, and that's to show where you get that cumulative $546,000. The, the payment plan is actually going to be calculated $2,165 less than your first year's annual savings. So you're already making $2,100 per year just through this program.
If I may interrupt, in the request for council action, I put the same table in there. It's a lot easier to read.
So if we don't realize the savings that are estimated on the chart, does the payment go down? According, if we, if we have a lower estimated savings for year two, does that mean our payment to you goes down? Or does it remain the same as according on the chart that we have here?
So per our agreement, the savings is based on the rates as they currently stand. And then with an anticipated increase of 3% annually per year. What we would see if the rates were to go up higher would, you know, so like a 7% increase in rates, your savings would actually be greater theoretically. And so we're not going to adjust that for any reason. That would be just, you know, essentially money into the pocket of the city. And we would keep, we are maintaining a flat 3% annual increase. So the, and because the rate is based on the lumens, not the actual kilowatt hours of savings, that is the, in the agreement with Pacific Powers what dictates that. So that is, while not, again, while not guaranteed, you know, it's, 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 takes a hu- huge amount of time to change rates. And of course, you'll see that coming from Pacific Power. And typically, because we're being conservative, like I said, you'll be seeing more savings rather than less savings. So the answer is, that's a long-winded, no, we will maintain that flat payment the entire time.
Thank you.
Thanks. A very basic construction schedule. Our material supplier is GE through a local distributor. And we, of course, we've got preferred pricing on these things to help keep the cost of these projects down and within reasonable time periods for payback for our customers, but we also have equipment on shelf ready to go. So as soon as this project is approved, the equipment order will be provided to GE. Shipping is somewhere in the six to eight weeks timeframe, and then we'll be utilizing some space on, in city grounds for our subcontractors to stow that equipment safely and securely and then start installation right away. We're looking at substantial completion probably about December.
December.
Any other questions of council?
I'm Adam Mayor. I have a few questions. Refresh my memory because this is way back last year. There was some discussion, especially from the public, that we have areas in the city that are dark and adding to more streetlights. And are we, we address that to this?
So one of the, because of this arrangement is based on savings from existing lights, adding more lights tends to take away from the savings. The recommendation is to follow our current process for adding additional streetlights to our system. And that is when we identify dark areas that we want to have a pole added, we contact Pacific Power and they install, we, we have an agreement with them for that new pole and the rate, and they install the, the light. Now, in that case, the new lights, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, the new lights that, that Pacific Power puts in are basically these same lights. And they don't, when they put in a new light that we, if we request a new streetlight, they're not going to put older technology and they're going to put the current.
So even when the new developments that have been going in, they've been putting these lights in already?
Yeah, I believe some of the new neighborhoods, like City Manager Young's neighborhood, they have the newer lights in it.
How about, out of curiosity, was there some thought into the, the median?
So the median lights are, are decorative and, and they are owned by the city. And so the savings doesn't work out the same way. For that reason, we did not include them in the, in the project.
So I have a question about, so if you walk down the street here, you'll notice that some of the lights go out as you're walking and other ones come on. It's like they're almost taking turns throughout the night. Will they be consistently on or will that still occur?
I, I'm not entirely certain as to why the lights were, would be going out. Could be anything from faulty wiring to a faulty sensor, if they are operated off of a, like a light sensor. So I'm, I'm not sure how, if I can really answer that question. What we do, our team will go through and note any wiring issues. So if there's bad wiring, faulty wiring, or if there is a improper configuration, we will note those. And then we go into a, just a conversation with Pacific Power as to whether we will, that's under our scope to fix or it's under their scope to fix. And so that happens, we account for about 1% of that. And so we will do our best to fix those issues. The, the current operation of the lights should not change. If there was something wrong with that to begin with, it should be noted as an, as a correction and then routed to Pacific Power for your standard service agreement. So I wish I could answer that any better.
I have some, some details on that question, actually. The, the type of technology, those lights do have a thermal sensor in them and they, they flicker to a lower degree to decrease their heat. And then they come back on once they're cool enough. So that's a weakness of the technology and I would assume that these LED lights, since they burn, that they're substantially cooler, they would not be changing because of overheating.
So I have one last question. So this is a light fixture ahead. Is that the, they're going to be able to have a visual change or you could, are the, is the consumer going to be able to see that there's, which lights that this has occurred on other than when they're on? Or is it just going to be there and you don't see anything different?
Yes, that's a great question. The, the light itself actually looks a little flatter. LEDs are, are direct, are unidirectional by design. And so they don't require a bulb or any kind of glass encasement that is actually what in, in these high pressure sodium, medium pressure sodium, they require that encasement. That also reflects light up and out. So these LEDs will be flat on the bottom and more directional, straight down into the cone that they're supposed to serve. So that would be the primary difference when you're driving by, instead of a bulbous overhead, you'll see more of a flat overhead.
And because you said that, I now have another question. So if one of them get damaged, this is part of the contract that they'll be taken care of and replaced and, or will we bear that?
So your, your light, your current agreement and the rate that you pay for Pacific Power already covers any kinds of damage and repairs as they occur and any outages or anything like that. And so the, the 51, you know, Schedule 51 rate already covers it. So you're covered there. And again, from Pacific Power standpoint, because these are newly installed lights, they will then utilize the manufacturer's warranty until the 10-year point or whatever it is.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I got, I, I, first of all, I want to know if those, those new lights are going to be on those six-foot pipes that go up the street. Are they going to be different than that? They're going to be shorter? Are they going to be on those pipes? Those are horrible looking, but I'm sure they must be.
Yes.
But, and I got one more thing, if I may. When this thing started, I'm thinking, this is too good to be true. I, I did believe that, but now, once you did a couple of meetings with us, it, it makes perfect sense to me.
I'm glad to hear that. That's wonderful. To answer your first question.
Actually on Second Avenue at the end.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think it's really a good thing. I don't know how we could go, you know, I won't say that, but yeah. Madam Mayor, I have one more curious question. On power outages, how reactive are they when they come back on?
If they, based on their timer and the time they're supposed to be on, they will come back immediately.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Council Trask, appreciate that. Looking forward to any, any other projects we can do for you. We'll apply the same methodology. If it makes sense, we'll do it.
Yes.
I know the first payment has more money in it, but as they go along, I'll use for my example, there's, there's $50,000 that goes as a payment to you over here. And, and am I right in the fact in that supposedly in that year, we're going to save $40,000? Is that the idea?
You'll save more than.
Well, for my example. Okay. We owe you 50, we save 40, then the city then has to basically come up with 10,000 bucks out of its general fund and you're paid. Is that the idea? Is we use the $40,000 savings to pay you on the $50,000 we owe you, plus whatever needs to be made up to make the difference?
That would be fraction.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of councillor? Well, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Angie, please take a vote.
Yes.
So what do we voting on?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, which one are you against?
Counselor.
Steph recommends option two, which is approval of the master agreement for energy as a service with Amararesco as presented and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Thank you.
May I get a motion agreed, option number two?
Okay. I just want to check with councillor Richards. You're going to second that motion? Yes. So we have a motion in a second for option number two. And Angie, please take the vote.
Start with Council Trask, yeah.
Yes.
Pro Tem Muller?
Yes.
Council Thorsted?
Yes.
Council Gorley?
Yes.
And Council Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes, we have six eyes and no nays to approve option number two. Thank you for being here and for your presentation. We appreciate all of the information you shared with us.
Mayor, councillors, very appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, information only. There's going to be a staff presentation regarding sewer rate study.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Right before we have Matt go ahead and give that presentation, I'm going to give a really quick presentation. First off, just updating everybody on where we are with our wastewater treatment plant. So that's getting pulled up. This will just take a couple of minutes. And the reason why I'm doing this is we're going to be talking about our sewer rate study and discussing possible options for, um, rate increases. So we wanted to show you where we're currently at. And please feel free to interrupt us and I'll really defer most questions to Director Springman. But I wanted to kind of give you this because it's, it's pretty exciting. So the design, the overall design was actually completed July 1st. Y'all recall, there was a $7 million funding source from the state and that has been entirely used up as of July, of June 30th. The environmental assessment and biological assessment were both completed on August 1st. And staff is reviewing those assessments to then submit back to DEQ and to USDA. So we have already moved forward on demoing the old silo and the biofilter. And if you go down there, it's already starting to look very different. There's the new FKC screw press and the padwork was done, installation, et cetera. There's also a new sledge blend tank. If you haven't seen that, you should go and take a look. It's actually a thing of beauty and it's much taller than I had expected. So it's, it's pretty neat to see. And there's additional preliminary work that's been done, including new electrical controls for the pumps and mixers, the expansion of the lower road. And I just wanted, the reason why I'm doing this too, as opposed to having Director Springman do it, is this has been a huge undertaking and I just wanted to congratulate Public Works for where they are at already. Director Springman and Stephen Haney and Trish Rice in particular, all of Public Works has been fantastic. But those three have been putting in so many hours and so much time to make this work and they've had to go back and reconfigure things and figure out how to be flexible and make this work over and over and over. And they've been doing that with grace and making it better each time. And so I just wanted to say a big thank you to them because it's really, really exciting to see how far they already are. And we're ready and poised now to move forward with the construction of the new wastewater treatment plant and it's really exciting. So anyway, just thank you to Director Springman and everybody as well. It really has been a lot of hard work. You should have seen some of the meetings where, where everyone's just almost in tears, but working through it in order to figure out how to make it happen. And it's been very, very inspiring to watch. So the next steps, we are waiting on the shelter structure and valves for the screw press as well as like some elbows and some other things that Director Springman can talk to if anybody wants to know. And then we're working on finalizing funding. So we have the USDA loan that is ready for us and that's about 30 million if, if we want to move forward with that. We have asked for federal funds. We have asked for, um, federal funds. We are looking at possible grants. We haven't received any of those yet. Nothing's been finalized. But we haven't heard back from our federal, um, um, sources so far on those yet. We also are in the process of applying for the WIFI alone. And that is a loan that will, um, be deferred for the first five years after construction. And so in, this is a way that even without grants, we think we can leverage both of those loans and continue to try to get grants in order to fund these. So, um, I'm going to actually hand it over now to our contracted director, Matt Brown, who's going to talk about how we would then pay those loans back. And that's where we're moving into the sewer rate. Before I do, are there any questions for me or for Greg?
I just have one question, very basic question. Um, Director Springman, how old was that silo that got removed?
I'll have to research that. I want to say it was part of the 73 edition.
73 edition.
I had the mayor nodding, so I, I'm 90% sure.
This is historic. Thank you so much for all your work. I mean, just nice to have.
Again, Trish and Stephen Haney have just been, I think we've had a great team and, and again, I want to give my kudos to them as well.
Yeah, and I know it's been a struggle because with inflation and all the increases that we've had to see. So I appreciate your time and effort you've put into, all of you have put into making this happen. So thank you. That's all I have.
Hi, good evening, Council Mayor. Nice to see you again. So I'm going to go through a, um, fairly quick presentation. There's not a lot of slides. There's not going to be a huge amount of numbers. Uh, but there'll be some pretty pictures that you can, uh, look at and, uh, ask any questions along the way. So don't hesitate to speak up. So real quickly, I wanted to give you all a, just a quick overview of your account basis. Um, so about over 90% of your customers for your sewer accounts are residential customers. It's pretty standard across cities. Um, I want to just note that you have about 31 or so, that's actually a little bit less now of no charge accounts. Most of those accounts are like irrigation only accounts, um, that are on public property or at a school district or something like that. So, um, we did have Public Works and Cindy and Greg's staff, uh, worked through all of those accounts and double checked all of them that they're appropriate. I think we found one or two that probably should have been an account. Those are now created and moving forward. So. So I had to go back a few years, um, and it's a little bit small on the screen, but I think 2005 is the far left corner. Um, working up to, uh, this current year because it's been a while since you've done any kind of rate increases. So, um, I wanted to give you kind of much of the picture as I could. Um, and those wild marks over there at the 20%, 30%, 11%. Um, those are some pretty high markers when you look at the overall average, um, and the graph. Ideally, we like to see and recommend average increases of about one to 4% every single year. It's slow, moderate increases. The reason we do that is to avoid big spikes like you see up above where the 20 and 30% that you get to a point, no increases. And then somebody decides to do a rate study because things don't look right. And then, oh, poof, you need to have 30% increases. So just to give you a little frame of reference, it's always about perception when you're talking about rate increases, percentages versus actual dollar amounts. So when we're looking at like a 31% increase, that was actually about $4.17. So how you talk about it in the community, how you prep it with the community can take a very big difference in opinion of what you see from your community feedback. I did a little rate comparison just on the sewer rates alone, um, with some of your comparable cities. So you see Albany, Portland, Lebanon, Staten and Silver Ten up there. Um, you're obviously a little bit on the lower side when we look at the comparables. Um, but again, that dollar difference is not a huge amount. So it's 60 to $66. Um, it's not a large amount when we take everything into consideration. So this is probably the most important graph of the entire presentation. Lots of lines, lots of colors. Let me explain them to you. The red line that you see are expenses. The green line that you see is revenue. The blue bars that you see are your ending fund balance every single year going year to year. The yellow dotted line is your reserves. So your policy of how much you should have in reserves. For any enterprise fund, the best practice is about 90 days, three months of reserves on hand, uh, for any catastrophic events. Funding dries up or anything like that. So you can continue, continue on working. The biggest kind of thing that I would point you to, if I could point to a TV screen, uh, with a laser pointer would be the very far right side. And it's where expenses go over your revenue. That is actually the first year of what would be your payment in five years, if you could, if you move forward with the WIFI loan. So the idea of what we're looking at is what do we do with rates over the next four or five years to get you to a point as close to a net operating zero? Okay? Any questions on that graph? So obviously you have a big spike in revenue expenses because that's when you're getting the loan and then you're spending it down. So a couple of things I want to leave you with. One thing that we always recommend during rate studies, um, and as finance directors is to update your master plans and your capital improvement plans every five years. It's a best practice to do for your water, your sewer and your storm. Review your forecast every single year, at least during the budget process, to know where your forecast is going to be. This forecast that I showed you today is built with the best information that I have available today. Next week, your public works director or city manager could decide that, hey, something happened. I need three more people. So you hire three more people. That takes a very large effect on your forecast that I just built for you last week and changes the entire scenario. Whatever funding or grant you receive, that may help pay down or lower that with the loan that you may need makes a huge impact in the forecast that you just see. So my forecast is only as good as the moment that I give it to you. The one recommend, the other recommendation that I'd like to leave you with is a recommended increase moving into next year of 3%. When, when you, we look at the graph as it is right now, that is assuming a 1% growth rate in your overall customer basis every single year. When we include a 3% increase over those remaining five years until that WIFI loan payment is due, we can get to roughly about $50,000 of a difference, which is pretty close to a net zero. But that's doing 3% increases every single year. So that 3% increase roughly translate on average to about a dollar 23 per customer that they would see as an increase on their sewer bill. We would propose, I believe, to bring back a resolution to the city council in September. Making those rates effective after the resolution passes. So you, they would likely be seen on that next billing cycle, which would be October, November timeframe. Any questions that I can answer?
Well, Madam Mayor, I'll give a little history based on this chart, this one chart, with the rates over time residential. Back in 2006, I remember the council said, well, let's wait one year and raise rates. Well, you see where we had a major spike. We raised it pretty high. In 2008, people remember the economy tanked really bad. As a council back then, we're like trying to think conservative for the customers, citizens and all that. Looking back hindsight on that, we got too conservative. Personally, you know, I look back at that, we should have been at least 4% every one of those years increasing. Then we wouldn't have had that big 31% spike that we had. That was the reason behind why it was so flat during that time was we were, because the economy tanked. And then we realized in 2015 that we, we, we again said, well, let's hold off another year. And then we looked back and said, well, we needed a raise. That's why we had a spike. My point when I was getting down is every one of these years where we held off and didn't do anything that year, as you can see by the graph, it spiked because we got too conservative for one year instead of having a, each year having some kind of an increase. And of course, you know, we can use COVID and all that excuses. We haven't done it for several years, as you can see from the graph. Um, I highly recommend that we, per your recommendation, that we do each year at least have an increase. If not 4% or pretty darn close. And that would be my recommendation personally and looking back at hindsight and what we did as a council.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
The history that he just gave you is kind of a tough deal. And when we went to the big things and it's very difficult. Um, it was in the, it was something that we, I don't want to say had to, but we really needed to do. And had we, I've talked to Kelsey about this lots of times, but if we had changed our process 15 years ago, there's a good chance we wouldn't be where we were at today. That's my personal opinion, even if it was 50 cents a year, you know, and, uh, I think for the the wastewater plant is a mess. And if we had gone that direction and the SDCs helped too, if we would have been doing that for 20 years ago. I mean, you can't, you can't even put numbers on that. Really, I don't know how you could do it. And when we raised that rate, there's a lot of people that can't afford a lot of that stuff. They just can't. I mean, you're somebody that's a widow and she's on her social security. We understood that and it, it was very, very difficult. In hindsight though, we, we have done a lot of stuff since then, uh, with that change. And also, if we want to get my loan or some money from the state or the whoever, they, they're going to say, listen, you got get your money in thing too. And it, if you don't do that, you will not get another loan. I mean, it could be a buck 50, it could be whatever, but if you don't put some of your money into the process, that they're not, you probably won't get the loan or the grants or whatever. Uh, and that's hard too. And my, I haven't been here as long as Greg and, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim. You know, but, but it was a tough deal and it was, it was hard. And we can't knock the people that were here before our term. We can't do that because they're very conservative and they were. But if we would have changed that process, we would have, we would have been better off today than we were then. And so I, I think that we need to do this too. And when did you say we would start that if we decided to do the thing? When is that going to happen?
So we would actually bring that back because right now this is just information and just opportunity to discuss. So we would bring that back in September. So at the next council meeting, we will talk about some of the master plans, which are also, or the recommendations that you saw. Um, and then we would bring it back in September with an actual amount that we would be recommending.
So if, if we have one meeting and we talk about this, I believe that we should have another meeting to get this on the road. That's my opinion. I, I don't think we need to wait around for till December or whatever it was.
September.
Yeah, but I mean, beyond that, we shouldn't go beyond that time.
Okay.
We should have that second meeting if we need to. If we have this conversation on the first one and we decided to do things and if we can do it right then, that's great. Uh, that's my opinion too. So, uh, I, I just think that this is, it, it's not something we want to do. It's something I think we need to do.
Did we need to also briefly to talk about rate comparison based on other communities? We had a discussion in the meeting.
I'd be happy to discuss that or, or we can go into that a little bit more if you all would like.
Yeah, but before we moved into that, I would just like to say that I agree with Counselor Trask. Um, I, yeah, I, I don't know if you'll hear me say that more than once, but I agree with Counselor Trask. Um, in that, uh, with, we need some skin in the game. I know that when we were at the Capitol requesting that $7 million that we received that we just used, it was, um, impactful to them that we had, um, raised our rates to try and fix the issues at our wastewater treatment facility. So I agree with, um, these counselors that we do need to have a steady increase, something small. I like the 3% range, but, um, something that we would not be in this situation again where um, a 1973 silo is being removed 50 years later. So we need to take care of our infrastructure and we know it's a mess right now.
To add to your, your statement, uh, I also agree with that in the fact that, because we talked to DeFazio's office. That was one of the, the factors in why we got that 30 million loan, that we'd had skin in the game.
Yeah.
Yes.
But my biggest million dollar question is that, that loan, 30 million loan, how we're going to pay that back? That was the biggest hurdle I thought we needed to, to address.
Madam Mayor, if I may again, um, now I understand that we spent the 7 million that we already had. And I, I'm, I'm thinking and because I talked to Greg about this, um, and we got that return, right? Is that true?
We have received checks for about half of it back. We'll be getting the rest. Um, it just takes a little while. And that will be back, but that is, we are being reimbursed for that. So that still goes back into, um, our budget as already was set up. So we can't really think of it as we're getting an additional 7 million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before.
For Madam, if I may. Um, Matt, we have two loans that are up in the big numbers, not huge numbers, but how are we going to be able to afford to get a $30 million? Not a grant, a loan. Are, are, how are we going to be able to pay, make that payment? And I know it goes for a while before we have to pay. Uh, and how long is it going to take us to get those other twos paid off? Can we do that sooner than later? Or do we have the, uh, can we do that? So my question.
I believe back about three or so years ago, your previous finance director did refinance a couple of the loans and information. Um, he refinanced what I believe was appropriate at the time. Um, with the rates that he was able to get, which were astronomically low and a lot of people refinanced at that time.
Yeah.
Um, those times are a little bit gone now, un- unfortunately. We have those rates built into your basic operating expenses right now. Um, so there, I do not believe there is a fear in the future of you not being able to make any of those payments. Um, where I get concerned is when you start to see those expenses rise above your revenue. Um, and also understanding that your costs will always go up. And so it is very important that you keep up, um, like Pro Tim Mayor was saying, consistent increases every single year. And yes, your previous council probably made what they thought was the best decision at the time with holding on rate increases. Unfortunately, it is a very similar story that happens all across the state of Oregon, across the United States, where people make that judgment call and then five years later down the road are doing a large increases. Updating your master plans like we recommended and, and that you have done actually outlines like what projects are SDC eligible. You've been collecting SDCs for, for a very long time, obviously from developers and homeowners that make improvements on their house. Unfortunately, you didn't have a master plan that outlined what capital projects that you have in your list that are SDC eligible. So you technically couldn't spend any of that money. Now that you have a master plan done for those enterprise accounts, it should outline what projects are SDC eligible, which means you don't have to use money from your actual operating is operating fund. You can use SDC funds to help pay for some of those projects, lowering your costs over, over time.
Um, Director Brown, I was also curious, do we, what other master plans have we not updated recently?
I believe if Greg wants to, Kelsey, they were going to talk about updating some of the most recent ones you have just done.
So I have two drafts what we're reviewing right now. One is the Stormwater Master Plan that came on the heels of the flood events. And then also the Water Master Plan that we've been actively engaging in. We actually did a model before that. And then we used the model for the master plan. And so we are satisfied with those, um, and we want to bring them to you. They still are in draft form. But we're just kind of waiting on some comments, maybe any other comments that you guys might have. And so we want to bring those back to you in the end of the month.
End of the month.
They'll be at the next council meeting.
Yep.
And those are the only outstanding, I would say, would be master plans or there others that need to be updated? Two more, okay.
There are two more that are in the process right now. That's the Parks Master Plan and the, uh, Transportation System Plan. Uh, both of which will be done in the next year or so.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. So now we can go on to, um, the rates, yeah, rate comparison that we wanted to discuss.
Can you go back to the slide with the communities? There we go. Perfect. So as you can see, we are about not even quite 50 cents, um, higher than Albany. One of the things to be aware of is larger communities have a larger population. So they're able to share, um, that a little bit more. And that's one of the reasons why you'll see some of those rates smaller. When you have a community the size of ours, as you can see, Portland is the next, um, lowest because that community is also larger. Then when you look at Lebanon, it because that community is also larger. Then when you look at Lebanon, it jumps up a bit. Um, State and it jumps and Silverton, it jumps even more. Um, again, if you look at these, about the three percent, if I recall correctly, is a dollar twenty-three or so. So even if we were to do about a three percent increase, we would still be very comparable to Portland, which would be amazing considering the size of Portland versus the size of Sweet Home. You know, I mean, we're what's five percent of the size of Portland or so. So, um, we have to carry a slightly larger amount when you have a smaller community. The other piece as well is, um, where we have various, we have smaller amounts of infrastructure. We also don't have the same amount of commercial support that communities like Portland and Albany get to have. If those, if that changes, if we start getting more businesses as we start getting more houses, we'll end up in a better place as well. So as our community grows and if as the way that it is currently projected to grow, these rates will sustain us even longer. If we do go by about the three percent each year, we'll stay, stay below Lebanon and State and in Silverton. For the foreseeable future as well, which is going to be, I think, both appealing to anybody who's looking into our community as well as those people who are already here. Matt, would you mind going to the one with the, the twenty twenty-nine? If, yes, that one. And this one's hard to see, but this is my favorite page. Because I'm a numbers geek too. And so Matt understands it's quite pretty. But it's also a little concerning if we don't do something in around twenty twenty-nine. We will end up upside down. Um, if we do do a, that gradual increase of about three percent each year, then by twenty twenty-nine, that's when we'd start paying back these loans. We're set up to pay back these loans and we have a working wastewater treatment plants, which will have hopefully already brought in additional housing and additional businesses, which will make us in an even better position moving forward. Are there any more questions on that? Did I cover it?
I appreciate you covering that. I really don't count Portland Albany as a good comparison. But looking at Lebanon, State and Silverton, I do because they're very close. I mean, Lebanon is obviously bigger, but I mean, State and Silverton are very close to our population base. So looking at where we stand compared to them, I think it's important that we, we observe and see that. And then again, it goes back to our conversation. I, we need to start having gradual increases each year.
If I can add just a couple more things to note. One of the things to keep in mind of your three percent increase on sewer rate is that we know that we're going to come back to the council with, with water and storm as well. And so making a moderate increase here allows us to also make moderate increases in water and sewer by not overly affecting the overall cost of a utility bill in Sweet Home. So if it's three percent here, two percent here, one percent there, overall, the average cost doesn't increase twenty dollars.
So when we discussed those rates at our next council meetings, would you be willing to include these, this report in there so we can look at all of it together and just be refreshed in our memory as well? And the rates that we're looking at right now are just sewer rates, rates that people need to keep in mind. Another thing, when we hear from citizens that are, their bills are too high. Sometimes citizens don't realize it is including those three different things, which is wastewater, water and stormwater. And I'd love to see a comparison with all of those together with other cities as well.
We would definitely build that into your rate study overall to give you a better picture.
I know that some have said even recently, our, our utilities are too high. I think a lot of those people have been here for a while that see that. But I've also heard from a lot of newcomers that they really like their utility bill here in Sweet Home, that it is a lot less than where they've come from in larger communities. So we are trying to be the best stewards of the money that the citizens give to us to fix things that need to be fixed. So any other comments or questions from counselors?
Matt, I, I really appreciate you being able to do this. I, I really would like to have you make these numbers a little bit smaller down on this one.
I will work on that for next time. But also that, that's actually a good reminder of that. The, the work that I do for the city is yours. Meaning that the performer and the forecast, the modeling that I do in Excel, I try and make it as simple as I can for those to edit or change things in the future. So if I ever were to leave for any reason, there's no reason that your staff, Trish, Greg, Kelsey, whoever, would not be able to take that Excel file and update the numbers to give you a more accurate picture. So I just want to make sure that you're aware that this information and the data is yours and it is readily available to your staff. If they need to make adjustments or changes in the future.
Well, thank you. For me, excuse me, it makes a lot. I, it makes it easier for me to get it through, go in my head and so somebody disagree with that. But it, it's a lot easier for me to follow it when you're, the way you're running the show here. And I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Appreciate it too. But was that a warning that you'd be leaving?
No.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Counselor Gorley, did you have a comment or question?
We have to put off sewer rate increases. And actually, I'm really proud of the council for considering all the needs of all the community to such a degree that we've sweated bullets over what was going on, but tried to make things as right as we could for our community. And having to pull that Band-Aid off once in a while and have these sharp spikes that you're seeing were painful, absolutely painful. And the idea that we are now in a place that we can talk about small increases and sustaining that, that's a really good place for us to be actually. And the only thing is, is I would, even if we commit to doing that, I would like to see us have annual reviews because I think that's an important education piece for all new counselors. And I, I just really think that we still need to continue to plod along and have these discussions. Cause your presentation tonight has been very good. And at times, um, our presentations have been a little contentious and a little hard. And we've, we've come a long ways and I really liked the way you presented it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also appreciate, because like you do hear from community members when they are struggling with their utility bills, that they can call city staff and they'll look into what's going on and why there maybe was an increase. So thank you for the staff for being gracious to our community members. Any other comments or questions, Counselors Thorstad or Counselor Richards? Just a moment. Let me hear from them first.
The only concern I guess I have for like the water rate increases is the three of you at the end sat down there in October and said you weren't going to increase any taxes or any fees or anything. And I understand why you are now, but I just, I just get irritated when people speak out both sides of their mouths and I'm a little disappointed to hear it tonight. Am I surprised? No. But I am a little disappointed, but that's all I've got.
Um, could we have some explanation of the difference between a tax and a fee from one of the staff members, please?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. And then Matt, feel free to jump in if I miss anything. So, um, the city is not able to impose any taxes. That is actually something that is, um, well, I mean, we could potentially do something like a gas tax that would then go out to the voters and the voters would choose to vote for something like that. But the city can't actually impose a tax, the, um, well, any new taxes. Well, and even with the taxes that are set, they're mostly set by counties and, and other pieces or by levies that have been voted on by the voters. A rate increase is something that it's like a, any type of business. We have utilities and we provide a service and that service is at a set rate. And the customers within her or in our community pay for those bills. And like any other type of business, we can choose to increase a rate in order to cover our costs and, um, or any type of new infrastructure that needs to occur. So they're very different in that this is a utility. And it is a utility that needs to be functioning in order to provide a service to the community. And so we have control, council has the control of the governing body to determine what those rates would be. And Matt, anything you want to add there?
The only thing I would add would be that fees and that you see in your general fund for coming in and paying planning fees or, um, any other fees that you, uh, general fund that I can't think of off the top of my head. Unlike, like, unlike a business, the government is there to not make a profit, but recover its costs. And that is the goal of every fee is to recover the cost of providing the service. For your enterprise funds, your water, sewer and your storm fund, they are specifically categorized in Oregon budget law and through RRS as enterprise funds. Um, and that is the only area in government where you can, I say in quotes, operate like a business in that you're providing a service, you're providing water, sewer or storm service, and you are allowed to charge a fee to recover those costs, build up your capital to spend on projects and future capital needs.
Well, um, Madam Mayor, excuse me, feed then, um, but either way, you're still, you're still having people, they're going to have to pay more, right? It's going to increase their cost of living. All I'm saying is I'm against that. I don't think it's the right time to do it.
Thank you for sharing. Um, just as clarification, I remember that the three of us mentioned we would not raise taxes. Fees to fix our wastewater facility are separate and different. If we do not fix our wastewater facility, what are some of the brief implications that would come about because of that?
Greg and I are both looking at each other because neither of us really want to answer that question. If we do not can fix our wastewater treatment plan, our wastewater treatment plant is failing. And we are already, um, we're already in a place where we may be subjected to additional fees by DEQ or additional fines. If enough of the wastewater treatment plan does fail and it goes into the water supply, that would be both, that would be catastrophic, um, both for the reputation of Sweet Home as well for anybody down river. We would have huge fines potentially. We would have fish die off. It would become, I mean, I don't, I don't want to use this lightly, but like the reputation could be similar to Flint, Michigan or other things as well. It's not something that we even really want to entertain. We have to fix our wastewater treatment plant if we want to continue to be a, a successful community. There's. Apparently nobody, even the microphone, wanted me to continue talking about that. I don't think it's, it's something that if we want to be a viable community, we can actually consider it has to get fixed one way or the other.
This is, it is the duty of this governing body to provide infrastructure that works for the community and our citizens. Counselor Thorstad, did you have something to share?
I remember that meeting, but that's beside the point. I don't want to get to that. If we don't redo our wastewater plant and they start finding the dickens out of us, is the state going to take over for us? Are they gonna, are they gonna rule, run the whole system then?
I'm not aware of any plan where they would do that currently.
Well, if, if we don't do this and they can just keep dinging this and dinging and dinging this about loan, I mean, about the five, the stuff that we're not doing and it's overwhelming the water in the sewer, they're gonna, they're gonna nail us on that and, and we have been pretty good about it. You know, they've kind of waived a few back in the day because we had a problem, a thing with them that said, oh yeah, well, anyway. But if we don't do this, it's gonna, it will be ugly, ugly. And they could start finding us like, you know what? I understand that Albany got a two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, one, two, I've heard the other day. We can't do that. We cannot afford that. And my last thing I'm going to talk about, if we didn't have the three people that were doing just exactly like you talked a little while, I didn't mean to point out you. If you did, if we didn't have those three people, we wouldn't be where we're at today. That's my opinion. And that's because of Greg and Steve and, and Trish. There's no doubt about that in my mind. And I'll have lunch with you tomorrow.
So I, I wasn't going to jump in.
And I will.
We're talking about getting loans and grants to help us make this a reality. We're talking about being able to effectively fix a serious problem that we, our community has and has to address. And tonight we're talking about a dollar twenty-three a month. That's it. As gas prices fluctuate more than that daily back and forth, that's what we're talking about. To dispose of the waste that we all create in our homes every day. And I don't want to raise it because I know we have people in fixed incomes, but we talked about that. We're not talking about ten dollars. We're not talking about twenty dollars. Talking about a dollar twenty-three to get us from point A to B to C and down that road to address a very serious issue. And I say kudos, absolutely kudos.
Director Springman, did you want to share anything?
Uh, we talked about fines. We've had a lot of conversations with DEQ and their enforcement group as of lately. I know Kelsey sat in on those. Um, we were recently, if you remember, fined twenty-two thousand dollars, four hundred and forty-five dollars, which we recently negotiated down to four hundred, uh, four thousand, four hundred dollars. That's with the caveat that we're going to do a little bit of restoration on the backside of Sankey Park on that, on Ames Creek, which we've worked with the South Santiam Watershed Council. As a part of this, I, I think they wanted us to bring on a consultant, which we have. We brought him on last month to look at the operations. We are in negotiations with DEQ for a potential administrative order that we can operate this plant while it's in poor condition, why we build. My thoughts are, is that if we make the decision not to build this, and I just want to throw this out as information. And then we keep doing, getting fines, which we had a hundred and twenty-five fines over the last three years. Those won't stop. This plant was designed capacity wise for a population of about thirty-five hundred people. We're over ten thousand now. It's not going to get easier. So I just want to say that if we get into an MAO, we can enter into those orders that will allow us to lower the fine while we're operating the plant and building the new one. But I believe that if we don't act, um, then, then they will step in and force us to whatever enforcement mechanisms they have. And that's kind of what, what they could do. I don't know what that looks like.
Can I add one more?
Sure.
Director Springman brought that up and we have been working with DOQ, DEQ. One thing just for information is they, there are some other potential grants and so forth that if we are still in good standing with DEQ, we are showing that we are making an effort. We are showing that we are doing everything in our community, raising rates and things like that. There's additional grants and additional funding that we could potentially get. If we get to a point where we aren't showing that we're making, um, this ongoing effort, the chances of us getting that funding becomes, uh, well, we, we just wouldn't get that funding. So, um, that's just another thing to keep in mind. You talked about having skin in the game. This is one of the ways that this is structured. In that we would be a lot more eligible for other grants and other funding that could then lower rates potentially in the future.
Yes, Director Brown.
Uh, just one more thing I wanted to add to that part of the loan process is to do a rate study to prove that you can repay the loan. And so if you were to move forward with saying, no, we're not going to do any increases at all, you likely would not get the loan to do any work. So this is also why we're presenting you with the rate study and the recommendations so that you can be approved by the loan, so you can finish the project.
Madam Mayor, if I may, and that's the reason we got seven million dollars. That's exactly why we got seven million dollars. Because they said yes or no, and that's exactly what happened. And that's what happens when you want to go for another one of those. That's, it's. That's, it's exactly what's going to happen again. And a dollar 23 doesn't seem like a lot. Some do, but I guarantee, there's six people right here today that I, I deal with every day that we have times. And we're not going to agree on everything. I can tell you that right now. And that's okay. That's perfectly okay. But we have to run the city. It's our responsibility to do this. And somebody's not going to like it. And I think we need to get that on the, before our meetings in September, we should probably put that out. And I know you will on the, on our Facebook thing and all those things. Adam will get that taken care of. And we probably need to have the paper realize that this is going to start and, and we just, I don't think we have very many options here. It just doesn't seem like to me. And having gone through this two or three times before, as harmful as that is, it, it's something we can't, I don't think we can, we can't go beyond this. We just gotta, it's gotta happen. Right or wrong, and whether you like it or you don't. Nobody, I don't believe in this building right here thinks you should or likes raising taxes or what are you going to call them? Nobody wants to do that, but there's no choice unless somebody gives us the, the $1.5 billion that we're, yeah, then maybe we could work something out.
Any other comments or questions of councilors? Moving on to reports of committees and reports from committees.
A reminder, Community Health, there is going on, on the 19th. And we have a meeting coming up this Thursday and I will be out of town. So our mayor will be taking over that meeting to just make sure everybody knows. And I thank her for that. Then the Community Arts Committee meeting will be coming up. And hopefully I'll be able to attend, but I don't know. I'll need to look at that as we get closer.
Any other updates from committees? Moving on, reports of city officials, city managers report.
All right. I just have a couple of things and then I'll let you all finish up. So I just want to thank everybody for a great jamboree weekend. I know everybody was involved and our staff was working really hard on that one. And especially kudos to our PD who were out there nonstop and did a great job on keeping everything calm. And at least this calmness, you know, they could. And, um, and to everybody who was involved. Um, it's such a great event. I wasn't able to attend for personal reasons, but I heard some fantastic things and I was able to kind of see things here and there. And that was, that was really neat to see. I also want to sincerely thank Sweet Home Fire District and ODF and Lynn County, everyone involved in the firefighting efforts as well as in the safety efforts. I actually saw our Pro Tem while they're driving the fire engine during jamboree, taking care of one of the health calls and other things as well. And it was really neat to see how our community is all coming together. The fire is still going just outside of Cascadia. If you haven't yet, I do encourage everybody to sign up for the Lynn Benton's Emergency Alert. Those, that link is on our Facebook page and that will notify you in case of evacuation. There are some members who are currently under a a level one evacuation. There's about 50 households or so, which is a be ready. And so that's just knowing what your plan is, knowing what to happen and so forth. And if it needs to get upgraded to a level two, that will happen as well. So I just want to encourage that. Check out our website. We also have a link on there for a system that is called Watch Duty. And that is not a government system. It's something that listens to scanners and puts some posts out there, but it can also provide a lot of good information if you're interested in that. So, and I just want to thank all of our firefighters. I know they're out there like right now. So appreciate it. This weekend, we are resuming Paint the Town. We took a, a Let's Paint the Town. We took a little break over the weekend for Jamboree. This is going to be the family weekend. So bring your kiddos. Um, there will be some games and, and some snacks and things like that throughout. On Friday evening afterwards, if you want to go to the movie in the park, it's going to be Finding Nemo. And it starts at 8:30, correct? At 8:30, but there will be a few games and so forth beforehand. And then on Saturday, there will be a barbecue for all of the volunteers that are painting this weekend, but also any volunteers who want to bring their families to this are welcome to that were previously painting as well. There'll be a couple of games and prizes for kids. So also I just wanted to remind everybody to check your council email. There's a new group, the Council 2023. And that's where all the agendas and meeting invites, and also I sent out emergency updates and everything is going to. So if you are having any trouble with any of that, let us know and we'll set up an appointment with Adam and he'll go through those pieces with you too. If there's any other IT stuff, we'll just set up an appointment and we can kind of work through that. I also wanted to recognize that we lost one of our library board directors and community members, Don Hopkins. And, um, I only had the pleasure of meeting him a few times, but I have heard quite a bit of how much he has contributed to the community. And so I just wanted to say, you know, our thoughts and prayers are with his family right now and we are so grateful for everything that he has done. And that's it for me for now. So thank you.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate, uh, Jamboree was a good weekend. Uh, I volunteered at the Sankey Park entrance, providing information. I really enjoyed meeting people who love Sweet Home, who don't live here, but those that have moved here because of the Jamboree and those that are considering moving here because of the Jamboree. And it was, it was a nice area to be. Sankey Park was quieter than the other areas, but it's just a great event. Over like about a thousand volunteers make that happen. So I do want to thank our PD, our fire district, but also those 1,000 volunteers that make that event happen. I just wanted to reiterate too, thank you to the fire district for the work they're doing on the fire. I know that Cascade Timber is also helping with that. So I really appreciate their efforts there. And I just want to say thank you to councilors for sharing thoughts this evening. I really appreciate the conversation we just had regarding our rate study. I'm, I'm going to appreciate hearing more about our storm and our water rates as well and to see what we really need to do and what we can maybe not do for the future. So thank you very much for that. Moving on to department directors reports. Is there anything that departments directors want to share? There's no reports in the?
Yes. On Friday at 10 a.m. at Sankey Park, we have Oregon Rocks. It's a presentation from the Museum of Natural and Cultural History. They'll be doing a talk about rocks and then lots of hands-on activities with the different rocks that you can find in Oregon. And that's for all ages. And then after that, go paint.
Nice. Great. Thank you so much, Director Daisy. Appreciate that. Okay. Moving on, any council business for the good of the order?
I have something. I just wanted to reiterate what Kelsey said and Mayor Coleman. Um, thank you to all the police, the fire department and all the emergency services. I saw you guys were all active this weekend. Um, so I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you. Anything else? Very good. I will end this meeting at 7:48.